Preserving our past, our present, and our future is dependent on how we protect our natural and cultural resources. Sustainable growth in land use is our only reliable guide through these complicated climate times.
I'm the executive director for the Coalition to Protect Prince William County, but really, I'm just your neighbor who happens to care about where I live and the rural crescent and Prince William County as a whole. And I have to say that I am thrilled that we have had such a positive turnout tonight. I know that people have been feeling afraid and concerned when they look at the proposals before, so many that you all probably were not even aware of. It is more than just the digital gateway. It is about losing the rural crescent as a smart growth land use tool that protects everyone. It's about the integrity of our national parks, not only the Manassas National Battlefield, but also the Prince William Forest National Park. So the threats are everywhere. And I want to make sure that people feel like they are empowered and that you are with your neighbors who care, just like you, about your quality of life. So I'm not going to talk a whole lot right now because I feel like I've shared with you why we're all here tonight, which is everybody cares about not only where you live, but what happens to your community and what happens to the county as a whole. And my concern, as is everybody, is what we are doing is not sustainable. It's not sustainable for the residents who live here now, and it's not sustainable for the future. And we have a right to have input into how our county grows and the community that we live in. So I have a special guest tonight because I want him to set the stage, really, and the tone of why we're all here. And I heard him speak at a listening session, and it was really moving to me because he is the reason why we should care. If you're here just because you care only about your home, that's not enough. You have to care about something bigger than yourself. So with that, I'd like to introduce Thomas Kipow. And he is going to share with us how he felt when he found out that where he lived was going to be consumed with industrial blight. So take it away.
Can you all hear me? Can you hear me now? My name is Thomas Kipow and I'm in the fifth grade at the Knoxville School. I wanted to come talk to you today so that you could see my face as one of the people that you would hurt if the proposed land changes are approved. I live in Knoxville and I've lived here all my life. The land to be zoned for industrial use borders my backyard. I want you to know how this change will affect me and many other children and families in the area. One of my favorite things to do is go on nature walks in the backyard. We like to look at wildlife and play by the creek. We like to see the green plants in the summer and the colorful leaves in the fall. We also like to see wildlife like deer, beavers, turkeys, turtles, and even bear friends. If the land behind our backyard is deforested, these animals would lose their homes. We also get our drinking water from a well in our backyard. All of our neighbors do as well. If a cement factory was built right next to my backyard, I would be afraid to drink our water or play in the creek due to the chemicals and waste. It's just not right to put factories in the middle of rural land, farms, and neighborhoods. My little sister is in second grade and even she knows that. Every generation is responsible for preserving the earth for the next generation and leaving the world better than they found it. If you make the decision to destroy the farms and trees in Knoxville, future generations will lose these forests and farms forever. So if you vote to approve of this change, please know that you would be hurting me and children like me. Thank you for your time.
I mean, just... very, very fabulous. I do want to introduce, we have two school board members here, I'm sorry, school board member Jackson and Law, and I want to compliment them and congratulate them for coming tonight. All the supervisors were invited, and it is not going unnoticed that, I know that Supervisor Lawson will be coming later, we also invited Congresswoman Wexton and the senators, and if you feel like you don't have representation, there is a reason why. So I want to say this very quickly, nobody on this stage can save us. Each one of you are going to have to stand up and participate because it's going to take all of us. And on that note, I would like to introduce my dear friend, Kim Hosen, and I just have to... Kim taught me everything I know about land use. I've known her for 20 years, and she's the most amazing, talented, knowledgeable, ethical person that I know. And she didn't pick me to say that.
Hi, everybody can hear me? Okay, how about now?
Louder.
Or how about...
Turn it up!
How about we turn it off?
No, we can't turn it off.
Still not?
Use your angry voice.
I don't know if it's on or not.
I think you switched it off.
Okay, hello, everybody. I am Kim Hosen, I'm with the Prince William Conservation Alliance, a nonprofit organization that's been working in Prince William for 20 years to support sustainable communities, promote environmental stewardship, and create opportunities for residents to act locally and participate in the decisions that affect the quality of their lives and the future of their communities. We all are so lucky to live and work in such an environmentally and culturally diverse area. Prince William is rich in natural resources. Did you know we're the only locality in the entire Chesapeake watershed that spans from tidal wetlands along the Potomac River to Bull Run Mountain? We also have a protected rural area, the rural crescent, and together, these create a unique landscape within the Washington, Baltimore metropolitan region and surrounding areas, and that is a foundation of the county's PR. We are here today with other white-minded organizations and citizens speaking to support preservation of our key environmental, cultural, and community assets today and for generations to come. Right now, the county is considering land use proposals that represent the largest land use change the county has considered in well more than 20 years. The digital gateway proposal would replace more than 2,100 acres of rural crescent fields and forest with data centers. Approximately 1,800 acres, rural crescent acres in Knoxville are now proposed for industrial development. The current comp plan update also proposes to double residential densities in the rural crescent and places higher densities in the rural crescent that are proposed for about 4,000 acres of villages, hamlets, and cluster development. If these are approved, the enormous loss of green space would have lasting detrimental impacts on resources, the resources that protect quality of life for everyone in county wide. Prince William County is lucky to have not one, but two national parks, Prince William Forest Park and Manassas National Battlefield. Data centers are proposed at the borders of both. These are very special areas that not only provide exceptional recreation and wildlife launching opportunities, they attract more than 1 million visitors and contribute $120 million to our economy every year. The rural crescent is important to the quality of life for everyone from east to west. It protects 40 miles of Virginia scenic highways, significant historic resources, very cool wireeries and breweries, unique agricultural uses such as goat yoga and a hydroponic farm, and the streams and wetlands that protect our groundwater and the Aquacon Reservoir, which provides clean drinking water to 40% of the region's 2.5 million population, including all of East Prince William. The rural crescent directs community infrastructure investments to the development area where most people live and public services are already in place. It's the county's best tool, actually, it's our home tool, to help them sprawl development, and that is why East Prince William Supervisors voted to adopt the rural crescent in 1998. The county's watershed management staff absolutely recognizes that the rural crescent is important, saying that the proposed tech flights classification that would allow data centers would result in a dramatic change to the land use with associate far-reaching impact to natural resources. Therefore, they say they are recommending no changes to the comprehensive plan. Fairfax Water also submitted comments expressing strong concerns, saying that given the magnitude of the proposed changes, they strongly recommend a comprehensive study to, one, assess the individual and cumulative impacts from the proposed development, and, two, identify opportunities to prevent water quality degradation in the Aquacon Reservoir. Citizens have also submitted strong comments in support of comprehensive studies. Prince William Conservation Alliance supports the studies and community involvement before decisions are made. I appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight for a community conversation, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you very much.
See, isn't she just fabulous? Okay, our next speaker is Elizabeth Ward. I have to read all... She's an environmental engineer specializing in groundwater contamination. So Elizabeth has an incredible PowerPoint for everyone, and I'm looking forward to everyone seeing it.
Except us.
Except you guys. We'll send you the PowerPoint.
It's an incredible PowerPoint that I cut down to six images. So much for incredible. Here we are in the rural crescent, maybe the last you see of it. I stole that image from Kim, actually.
Louder, louder, please.
Okay, how's that? Better?
Just get closer to the mic.
Okay, we'll try this?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we are in the last of the rural crescent. The changes that are proposed for the Prince William Digital Gateway Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the 2014 Comprehensive Plan Update will effectively remove 10,000 acres from the rural crescent as outlined by Kim, 4,200 for industrial and data center, and the rest of that for higher density residential and commercial. The rest of the rural crescent will be upzoned, higher density. That is a massive rezoning that will bring great wealth to the landowners. Land that is worth $25,000 to $50,000 an acre would magically be worth up to $1 million an acre in the case of data centers. But that windfall profits threatens the drinking water supply for all of Prince William County and the entire Aquacon watershed. Here we are, Aquacon watershed. The is the source of groundwater and surface water that feeds Prince William's private wells, public wells, and the Aquacon reservoir itself, which contains 8.5 billion gallons of water that provides, as Kim mentioned, 40% of the drinking water for Fairfax Water. And that includes Prince William. 350,000 people in Prince William get their drinking water via Fairfax Water through Prince William Service Authority. The Aquacon watershed is the most urbanized watershed in the nation, and yet, we are proposing, or they are proposing, to make it more so. Next. Okay, this is what happens when you develop a watershed. Development in the rural crescent threatens the health of the Aquacon watershed and the very sustainability and affordability of the drinking water supply for Northern Virginia. When generally opened rural land is developed, the groundwater recharge is reduced, in this case, from 50% down to 15%. Stormwater runoff increases from about 10% to 55%. Washing away stream banks, flooding roads and buildings, carrying fertilizer, oil, grease, and road salt to the Aquacon reservoir. Next. We are at a moment in time where we are practically at the limit of salinity. If you look at this slide, which I happily spilled from Fairfax Water, you'll see that the salinity is increasing. That gold line is the EPA health limit. We're pretty much above it. We are approaching the taste impairment. The salinity in the reservoir has been going up over time. This is from 1980 to 2020, reaching a critical stage right now. Increased population, industry, and paved surfaces will only make it worse. The only way to remove salt is desalinization. There is no other source of drinking water to supply us. We have to use this source. The cost to add desalinization lines to Fairfax Water and UASA, and for those of you who don't know what UASA is, it's the Upper Aquacon Service Authority, and provides 40 million gallons a day of recycled water into the Aquacon reservoir we're drinking. The estimated cost to desalinate those two sources of water are between $1 and $2 billion. This is a cost that will be borne by the ratepayers in Prince William and Fairfax. No one has solved this type of problem before, and galvanic corrosion could prove the wild card and make it far more difficult than they think. Next one. Okay, so on your left is the watershed during a wet period, on your right is the watershed during a dry period. The red is the reservoir, is the UASA's recycled water. The yellow and blue are the streams from the watershed. The rising salt in the reservoir are primarily from the watershed runoff during the weather and UASA during the dry weather. Next one. The sodium concentration in the reclaimed water, and this slide is from the Owl Laboratory, the Aquacon watershed laboratory, they've been testing the water since, for what, 40 years? Because we're drinking recycled water, they keep an eye on it, is higher than the watersheds right now. If you add more roads, more salting, that might change. But as you can see from the slide, the Aquacon watershed, from the Aquacon watershed, more than half of the salt content is from an unknown source. You've got the micron manufacturer fabrication facility, you've got human waste, you've got wastewater treatment, and you've got unknown for 53%. It is believed, but not known yet, and they're looking for a grant to research it, that the blowdown from the data centers' cooling water, it's very salty, that it has been increasing the salt in the Aquacon because it's going to the sewer. Prince William County did not even consider the impact of the proposed changes to the quality, availability, and sustainability of water resources. They are required to do that under the Comprehensive Plan Law. In addition, Fairfax Water has taken the unusual step to ask that Prince William County convene the Aquacon Basin Policy Board and oversee a comprehensive study of the proposed land use change and what impact it will have on water quality and quantity in the reservoir before any action is taken. The cost to restore the basin and treat the water is in the billions of dollars, and that will be borne by us, the residents who remain, not those who get their windfall profits and take their millions and leave. Let's look at this and know what we're doing before we act. Thank you.
That was really good. It's very good. Okay, our next speaker is Bob Weir, town and Hager Market Councilman and local curmudgeon, and also someone who you cannot fool on FOIA and code and everything else. Bob, go on.
Tonight, the only hat I'm wearing is resident county curmudgeon. I wear that hat rather well. It's funny, I'm used to speaking in three minutes or less, and I've got more than three minutes, and I've been told I have to be short. So I'll be short. I'll be blunt, brief, and some might say brutal while I wait to get the map up. I'm going to limit my conversation tonight to transportation, and I would suggest that most of the people, I'm going to assume that most of the people in this room have some semblance or have some sense of the development that's coming or the development that's planned, and I'm sure most of you have seen your tax bills. If you have concerns with development taxation now, wait until you see what Prince William County has coming down the pipeline. This is a map of their future transit alternatives map, essentially mass transit. Not a bad thing in theory, but in the way that they're planning to carry this out, it's impractical and, quite frankly, so fiscally irresponsible that it would bankrupt the county. If you look at the upper dotted line, that represents the orange line extension to Haymarket. Anybody been on 66 recently and seen all that construction? Yeah, there's no place for that train. Similarly, if you look here on the eastern side of the county, you'll see a blue line that loops over towards Aquacon and does not run down Route 95 principally, and that's the yellow line extension. Now, I know it makes great points at political meetings and to people's constituents to say, "We're bringing Metro to Prince William to make your lives better and provide you with mass transit options." What they don't tell you is the cost and the infeasibility of that. The construction costs alone run in the tens, if not hundreds, of billions of dollars. We don't know because of the condemnation, especially on the Route 95 corridor. The other thing they don't tell you is the operational cost, hundreds of millions of dollars a year that the county would have to pay for VRA and/or Metro. That's annually, based on how many stations you have and how much of the load enters onto, enters onto the stations in the county. That's maintenance costs, that's continuing capital costs, new equipment costs, all of which we don't have the funding for in the current budget, so you can guess where the money for that's going to come from. Similarly, VRA, again, they're proposing to extend VRA from Gainesville to Haymarket. We actually have numbers on this put up by the G D Department of Rail last year, estimates on the cost. To extend it to Gainesville, $783 to $865 million, and that does not include the maintenance or the equipment costs. And to extend it to Haymarket, $832 to $915 million. I don't think anybody in this room believes that the county has the capacity to pay for that, at least not without taxing all of us into oblivion. Next slide, please. Okay, here we go. This is a fun one. This is the most recent draft transportation map, mobility map, the county has put out as part of the mobility chapter. If you can scroll down to the bottom of it. Let's start with the upper foot in the room, which is the By County Parkway. By County Parkway is essentially a truckway that runs from 95 to the Loudoun County line in concept. What is the By County Parkway? By definition, at the very least, it is a four-lane divided highway with a shared use path. If you look down here at the southern end of Duckery's Road, which is 234, you will see that on the map, the county is planning to, proposes to expand it from four lanes to at least six lanes. That's in the written, it's in the written component come on in the map, it's also on the map itself. You go up a little further, you'll see the blue line ends at Prince William Parkway and doesn't pick up again as you go north towards 66. What's not designated on this map is what's in the actual text of the mobility chapter. If you read the text of the mobility chapter, they also plan on expanding the 234 bypass from four lanes to six lanes, from 28 all the way to 66.
Bob, they can't hear you in the back. Put the microphone close.
So it's not shown on this map, but it's in the proposed text. Why? I couldn't tell you. Once you get to the end of the bypass where it deadends essentially at 66, there's another component that's not shown on this map, but is in the actual written text, and that's an expansion of 29 from Heathco to the 234 bypass intersection. Well, anybody who lives out here knows there is no 29-234 bypass intersection, yet. But if that, if that intersection is built, that ties you from the existing 234 bypass widened all the way to 95, essentially to Pagelet, which, as you can see here, is widened as well. There's a lot of speculation as to where the road goes from there. The county board will tell you the By County Parkway is dead, but the plans for Pagelet Road are, and I quote, "a four-lane divided highway with a shared use path." Sound familiar? It is the definition of the By County Parkway. Whether or not it goes up Sanders Lane or not, or it goes some other, or takes some other path north, the construction costs of that are going to be the same. You'll also note that they want a widened southerly road from the battlefield to Route 15. Can anybody here imagine what the condemnation and construction costs of that are, and how many houses that will impact? Similar plans for going on Route 15. You go back down, they've got all kinds of things like this in the plan. The county tells you one thing, they put another thing in the comp plan. Those of you that were familiar with the carver road issues over the years, county has pledged, in fact, I believe it was a county directive, to downplan both roads from four lanes to two lanes, keep them at two lanes. They're shown, they're shown as being under study again in the mobility map. If you read the text, they're proposing to widen. What the county board tells you and what the planning office puts into their plan and what the county will probably ultimately adopt are completely opposite. Quite frankly, I don't trust anybody anymore. I don't trust Ward, I don't trust hers, I don't trust the planning department, and transportation, I trust even less than that. But I want you to consider all of this. If they have their way, and even a quarter of these roads are built, experience dictates that with that type of roadway expansion, development follows. and what the county will probably ultimately adopt are completely opposite. Quite frankly, I don't trust anybody anymore. I don't trust the board, I don't trust the council, I don't trust the planning department, and transportation, I trust even less than that. But I want you to consider all of this. If they have their way, and even a quarter of these roads are built, experience dictates that with that type of roadway expansion, development follows soon on. So now maybe you have to pay for the infrastructure of the roads, then you've got to pay for the sewer, you've got to pay for the schools, you've got to pay for the new police stations, the new fire stations. Doesn't leave a whole lot of money for parks, but I guess you've got to add those too, even though those are shrinking as we speak. So how do we pay for it? And who's really running the show in this county? Because it doesn't seem like it's the residents' desires, since I think the residents have been pretty clear on what they do want and what they don't want. And I think we want a better quality of life, or at least to maintain what we've got, and we're certainly unfavorable a lot of these road projects. Thank you.
So, Bob did touch upon the By County Parkway, but actually, our next speaker, DeShawn McJefferson, is a Montclair resident, and she's an active member of the Prince William Democratic Committee. She's a former Hill staffer and Communication Director for a trade association, and DeShawn is going to share what her experience will be if, living on the east end, if these proposals are heard.
All right, I could be honest, but can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I gotta be honest, I thought I was a little later in the program, so I was still kind of working on my notes. And I'm going to be honest, I'm going to take a little liberty, sorry, but you know, three minutes and a half time. So I know that I'm supposed to speak about the By County Parkway, but I'm going to go off script a little bit. The board is making some decisions that is going to impact our county for generations. And quite frankly, you know, I have a 14-year-old boy who's not here. He's at home being a basement troll, playing on Xbox, because that's what 14-year-olds do. But I'm also down here because I want him to have the option to live in Prince William County if he so chooses when he's an adult. And I don't know if that's going to be an option in the next 10 years when some of the decisions the board is making. So that's why I'm down here. I want him to be able to live in Prince William County. I want this to be a place that people choose to live. So, land use is political, and I don't agree that zoning can be and has been used as a tool to segregate. But I'm very deeply offended by proponents of the Prince William Digital Gateway who are using race for their own gain. I sat next to a woman at the last Board of County Supervisors meeting who had a shirt on, those shirts that sang, you know, "In this exclusionary zoning." You know, and I had to ask her about that. So, you know, if you really care about equity and land use, then why would you buy in an area that's supposedly discriminatory? "Oh, no, I bought my house seven and a half years ago so that I could flip it. My goal was to create generational wealth." Oh, okay. So, the why do you all of a sudden care about exclusionary zoning? You don't. This is a point, it's a talking point, because you want to help push through a very controversial land use decision. It has nothing about race. It's about profit, not about land use equity, it's about profit. So I live on the east side, and I am very concerned about the water quality. This is the water that my son and I showered in, this is the water that we drink. There have been no studies, there doesn't even seem like there's even any interest in doing this stuff. The fact that Fairfax County Water had to get involved, that should be frightening to us. That really should be frightening to us, because what is our county doing if the next jurisdiction over has to occur? So look at that, I know I was quickly writing, so I can get back on track. But I am concerned, because I live in Montclair, which right now is hell of a bar, but we have four schools off of 234, which would be the connecting point for the By County Parkway. Two of those schools are elementary schools. One of them is for low-income head start programs. There are kids who cross 234 every day, and some kids who cross early in the morning because that's where they catch their bus for the special program. We already have concerns about our children having to cross a dangerous roadway. Now, what is it going to look like if you turn it into a truck route? What about the communities? The Montclairs, the Ashlands, the Four Seasons, the Britneys, which by the way, the Brittany is not in a real press meal, okay? I know there's a service supervisor who has claimed it is in a real press. But it will change our county, it will cut our county in half. It will make what for me is the road that I take to go to the Target or I go to the Lidl, or then I go to my son's high school, it will essentially turn into the outer beltway. So I have real concerns. And I do want to address quickly, since I'm already going off script, when we talk about revenue, the county does pay revenue, but you can't take everyone's money. What is the price for the changes? We have right now, we have developer-driven growth, not smart growth. Everyone ran, everyone at board ran on smart growth, but we have developer-driven growth. What is the price of their vision for our county? For me personally, I think it's too high, and that's why I came out here. You know, we need everyone out here, not just us on the stage, I mean, we have some certain, like Freak of Flyers here, these board supervisors. But we need more people. We need more people to go to those meetings and to speak out and to make their voices heard. We need people, and I'm guilty, I'll be there, go to the planning commission meetings. We need more people to make their voices heard. Listen, I've had some arrows thrown at me, because I've taken a very hard stand against a number of people in my party, people who I supported running for office, people who will no longer take my calls. And I'm kind of glad about that. It's fun being an outsider and an activist, especially when you're on the side of the We need more people out here, we need more people to speak against this, because this is our county, this is our home. For you who have children, grandchildren, think about the legacy that you want to leave them. You've got to fight for this. If you can't fight for your community, nothing else is important for your community. So thank you very much.
That was fantastic, and thank you for going off script. We appreciate that, DeShawn. Our next speaker is Bill Wright. He's retired Navy captain, he's a former analyst for Homeland Security, and he is also a board and a sign of the supervisors. And I have enjoyed getting to know Bill, and you're on, Bill.
Well, thank you. So, I have some prepared remarks. It seems like for the last five months, my entire life has been a series of prepared remarks. As Elena mentioned, I did 25 years in the Navy and I retired, and then I did 18 years for Homeland Security and I retired, and now I'm on my third career as a rabble rattler. And I would like to retire from that too, if the county would give me a chance, but they keep creating more material. So, you see me every week in the letters.
No, you're good.
I'm good?
Okay.
Oh, how's this?
Yeah.
Rangers in the morning? So, I, at one of these, one of these days, I'd like to get out of this racket, but until that day, I'm going to be here entertaining you with, oh, that's not yet, I have slides. This is new for me, visual aids. The best thing about tonight is that I don't have to finish my remarks in three minutes and talk like the man in the Federal Express commercial, which I do like every week. So I'm going to take a leisurely time and try to have a conversation with you about things that are disturbing to me, and I hope they're disturbing to you too. So I'm really happy to see a lot of people here tonight, and people here, I hope, that are committed to saving our county from the jaws of reckless development. And I think it's even more reckless because it's so unnecessary. It's hard to believe that only six years ago, our county leadership actually had a good idea. It was called the Data Center Opportunity Zone Overlay District. Its objective was to restrict data centers to industrial areas suitable for that type of development. This completely reasonable concept held up pretty well until it was deemed an impediment to developer designs. So, that's not my chart. Do you have my chart?
I do.
My charts are much simpler than this one. It says, "Bill Wright, one of the neighbors." Ah, here we go. So, if you look at this chart, you can see that Prince William County is already on track to surpass Loudoun County as data center capital of the universe, even without the Prince William Digital Gateway. You can see that right now, the data center capital of the universe, Loudoun County has 25 million square feet of data center capacity, 4 billion underdevelopment for a total of 29. Prince William has 6.25 billion operated, 27.1 million underdevelopment. That's not counting the Prince William Digital Gateway for a total of 33. So even without this, we're well on track to surpass Loudoun County. The county, Prince William County, has articulated no end goal for data center development. So are we to believe that their appetite is unlimited? And what other priorities will be subordinate to the insatiable demand of data centers? Are our entire lives to be hostages to streaming video? Where will all citizens live, work, and play if we must all take a backseat to the relentless march of concrete behemoths? How many plans and dreams will be upended as we are elbow-decided to accommodate developer ambitions? Next chart, please. Okay, so look at this chart and ask yourself, "What for?" Opponents of this Prince William Digital Gateway have said all along that there is sufficient usable land in the existing data center overlay district that can be developed responsibly. Prematurely seeking data center development outside the overlay district is unnecessary when the county is in a strong position to drive a harder bargain over highly desirable properties. The county's lame marketing efforts are giving away the store and needlessly squandering our irreplaceable natural, historic, and cultural resources. So let me ask you, why would your government pursue this reckless course when there are clearly better options available? I have some suggestions for you. Number one, ineptitude. Your government doesn't come up with its own ideas, but simply considers what developers throw on the table. Two. Two, dullability. Your government officials are suckers for a slick sales pitch.
You're not wrong.
I didn't realize you were on applause lines, thank you. Three, laziness. Due diligence is not performed. When the sharp-skinned suits tell our government not to worry about something, they don't. Four, undue influence. Money interests speak louder than the public interest. And that is why you are here tonight, and that is something that we hope to turn around with your help. You should be very worried about the future of our county, not only because of this issue, but because of what it portends for the future. The Prince William Digital Gateway is the poster child of boneheaded ideas. If the supervisors can approve a 2,133-acre industrial corridor in a critical watershed between a national park and a state forest adjacent to a retirement community, over the objections of numerous subject matter experts, including their own staff, they can move it. And don't kid yourself, unless we start making more noise, they will, okay? And the point of being here tonight is not to entertain you, but to engage you, to ask for your help, to join the fight, because right now, the water is being carried, excuse me, the water is being carried by a relatively small number of people on your behalf, for your interests. We need your help to deliver the message louder and funnier. So what do we do? We need more indifferent people making noise. The supervisors are thoroughly sick of hearing from me and the small vocal nucleus that's been carrying this torch to date. Silent support is useless. They need to see, hear, and feel the depth of the opposition. It is the only thing that will move them. Write letters and emails, make phone calls, show up at meetings and comment. Write letters to the editor, I can give you a couple of pointers on that. Unless we alter the current trajectory, we will lose and the idol will regret their complacency. Take action and you can take control of your government. Let them know the citizens of Prince William County demand people before profits, preservation not ruination, prudence not negligence, smart growth not reckless development. No to bad ideas for a fast water. No to surrendering our sovereignty to bull throwers and bulldozers. No to the Prince William Digital Gateway. Thank you.
Always, always entertaining, Bill. Thank you. Now, our next speaker is Vita Carroll, and honestly, I, just very quickly, I love the people, I mean, terrible things happen in Prince William County, terrible proposals, but the advantages you get to meet people you would otherwise not meet, and I want to introduce Vita Carroll, who is a dedicated mom and farm rights setter. She's just amazing. Please welcome Vita Carroll.
I thought it was Vita.
What Elena didn't mention is that she asked someone else to speak before me, and that person was out of town. So, here I am, still great. Okay, so first, let me talk about this slide a little bit. Okay, so, I live in the Rensville District, so a lot of you may be in the Gainesville District, but what I want to say is that there's a, like, what's happening on Pageville Lane is happening and terrible, and it is happening, by the way, unless we can mobilize. But there's a lot happening on my side of the world, which is down here in the Village of Knopesville. So, what, which if you happen to be down there, it's a sweet little spot with thornland, and right now, that blue arrow you see is a 1,900-acre industrial zoning change. So there was a few acres, you know, a couple hundred acres of industrial zoning along the railroad tracks, and now the county wants to expand it with a stroke of a pen, 1,900 acres of industrial zoning. There's also an application in for a 270-70 for data center campus along Vin Hill Road, which is, which between two gravel roads, likely be the first multiple along Vin Hill, requiring the road to be widened, traffic lights added in. This plan, this 1,900 acres, is an industrial block directly bordering Knopesville Village, backing up to Knopesville Park, other homes, farms located between Knopesville and the Foxhaw County Line. It would open up space for data centers and hard industrial uses like cement plants. Industrial developments like data centers and cement plants are incompatible to rural residential zoning, and I'm not the only one saying that, that's why the county's own compatibility chart, okay? Data centers in Prince William County have been approved up to 75 feet in height, require massive transmission lines and new substations built to support them. Any type of industrial development in the rural area will pave over green space, permanently impacting the county's watershed, as well as rural neighbors who rely on well water and properly draining septic fields. So, once you turn something into industrial land, it cannot be turned back, like, that, that is it, okay? So saying, saying no, like, just because there's open space there, doesn't mean it should be, a data center or a cement plant. And then I wanted to talk about Knopesville Village and Hamlets. So Knopesville, an outline there, she'll switch the slides, but the current draft comp land plan proposes zoning changes to Knopesville, and Hamlets throughout the county still have Harbin, Greenwich, Rensville, and the thought of growth in downtown Knopesville is exciting, and these Hamlets are exciting. The proposed zoning changes allow for townhomes, no small area plan to keep developers in check. Yeah, there it is. The bottom line is infrastructure currently in place in Knopesville, Rensville, Greenwich, Cap Harbin cannot support increase in density, sewer, school capacity, and road traffic will all be impacted. Cluster residential development is across the rural area as well, I don't think there's a slide for it, but the CR zoning just spreads suburbia into the rural area, and the bottom line is the infrastructure cannot support it. We need to look at what infrastructure is there, what would need to be there to support this, and then who is going to pay for this? The burden of improvements will fall to taxpayers. The burden of improvements will fall to taxpayers, not developers. There's no clear guidelines in place for this cluster residential zoning. It opens the door to higher-density homes in rural area. Again, schools cannot sustain it. It will pull more resources to the western and to the county because more new schools will need to be built to sustain new development. And it will pull resources away from the eastern schools that need improvements while the western keeps getting new schools. So, I haven't been doing this as long as... Thank you, except maybe Bill, I may think. But I've been... You know, seven months ago, we got concerned about something that was happening in our neighborhood, and I just... Now I'm here. So I'm not an expert, but I want to say, you know, I want to live for a long time in Prince William County and raise my kids here. And I think if there's one... If there's two things that me being here showcases is its first, you don't have to be an expert in this to understand how wrong and how damaging this land plan... Plan, if it could be called that, is going to be to the county. And then second, there's a need for new voices, like mine. There's a need for your voice. If you're here, you clearly care in some regard. So please, email the board. Just make one thing you want to do when you leave tonight. Is that send an email? Is that call someone? Is that email the planning commission? Is that, oh, speak? You can speak virtually. It's very easy. You only have to talk for three minutes or less. There's a need for people to get involved, to send emails to meetings, to provide public comments, and to ask the hard questions, to look at this, and realize that it's not just a cute name, hamlet. If I can do it, you can do it, and you should do it. This is going to impact everyone in the county, so, thanks.
I know you weren't the first choice. Patty McKay was the planning commissioner, but Vita was absolutely right there to step in, and I thank you. And our final speaker for the night is Frank Washington. And once again, I just... I know it's been very stressful what has been proposed throughout the county, but I have enjoyed meeting new neighbors. And Frank is a neighbor. His family has been here for generations. And he is just such a wonderful, decent human being. And he is now the leader of the Coalition to Save Thoroughfare Town. And welcome, Frank.
Thoroughfare. Thoroughfare is a small community nestled in a rural crescent that was established by my ancestors of freed slaves and Native Americans in 1800s. I was born and raised in Thoroughfare. My parents, grandparents, great-grandparents were also born and raised there. My family's roots are deep within the historic rural crescent of this county. I know firsthand what disasters can be in store, but a decision for development is supposedly made in the name of progress. I saw it clearly as I watched one of my family's cemeteries in Thoroughfare of over 75 graves of slave, freed slaves, Native Americans, completely bulldozed without pause, without accountability, without repercussions, without restoration, without compassion or empathy for my family or my community. I watched as they drank, danced, and partied in live band at that cemetery just days after they bulldozed it. This was a documented, reported cemetery with the county, supposedly protected by law. It has now been disintegrated three additional times since that initial bulldozing, all in the name of greed and power. Other areas of the historic town of Thoroughfare have also met the same fate, overthrew the same fate. A devastation of pain and loss that will haunt me and my family for the remainder of our lives. But it should remain with all of you as well. Because Thoroughfare is not just my history, it is part of our collective history. If this can happen to a documented cemetery with an acknowledged historic town such as Thoroughfare, imagine what it could be in store for the Page Land area and its history. We all need to be keenly aware of the importance of what will be lost with the digital gateway projects simply to fulfill the financial endeavors of a select few. A collective history that includes the battlefield and the areas surrounding it where slave, freed slave, Native American gravesites are scattered throughout, areas where they built homes and settled during the Reconstruction period, land that was associated with the plantation. The Pennsylvania plantation, which stretched along Page Land, was owned by the same family as the Cloverland plantation that existed in Thoroughfare. Land where many families of color built several communities connected to Thoroughfare. Settlement on Page Land known as Thornton, which existed on Page Land Road, and the Marble Hill Flatiron Corner Settlement that existed in the area of Aldy Road, Marble Hill Lane, and Sudley Road adjacent to and through Page Land. These areas of post-Civil War African-American communities in such close proximity to a national battlefield park also present a unique rural and cultural landscape that tells the story of one of the most significant periods of American history: the Civil War, Reconstruction, and the formation of African-American communities that developed during the post-Civil War era, developments that helped build Prince William County. This entire area of Page Land was considered a forsaken land by the Pennsylvania plantation owners. So it was allotted to freed slaves who first rented in the area, and then they bought. Just as with Thoroughfare, they built thriving communities throughout. The Thornton-Elliott School that once stood on Thornton Lane in Page Land is where many people of color had the opportunity to learn to read and write freely for the first time. A short distance from this school stands a church, Mount Calvary. It still stands as it has since the 1800s, a church which was the heart of the Page Land communities of color, a church founded by Jenny Dean. Jenny Dean was born a slave on the Pennsylvania plantation. After the war, she and her family settled and built their home on the very land that was that once held them captive, but now offered them freedom. Her dream and education was nurtured on Page Land. In short, she had a dream to build an industrial school for children of color to learn a trade to better their lives. Despite much opposition, she succeeded. And the Manassas Industrial School was built, and it thrived. Many years later, it was turned into a middle school and then an elementary school. That school still stands. Jenny Dean and her family are buried at the Mount Calvary Church. Though rebuilt twice, the Sudley Methodist Church, which still stands adjacent to Page Land, was a field hospital during the Civil War for both Confederate and Union soldiers. Where do you think many of these bodies of those soldiers that died in that hospital are resting? History leads us to the conclusion that many are scattered in unmarked graves throughout Page Land alongside the slave, freed slave graves and cemeteries that we know exist in the areas where the settlements and the plantation existed. This type of historical knowledge of an area they wish to destroy in the name of perceived progress is of vital importance. But it is only touching the surface of this area's history, especially when it comes to the cemeteries and gravesites. I have seen only minimal acknowledgement of cemeteries or graves in proposals submitted supporting the sale of properties. The Page Land area warrants more than just a casual mention of cemeteries or graves. It warrants more than just a casual overview of the historic value of the area and its historic connection to the battlefield. Based on what I have experienced and have learned with my struggles with Thoroughfare, we cannot trust that a fair and equitable mentality exists among those who are pushing for changing this hollow ground of the rural crescent to industrial, a destructive change that is unwarranted, sought primarily, as I stated earlier, to put millions of dollars in the pockets of a select few, an onslaught of greed, power, and privilege that threatens our collective history, our environment as a whole, and in many ways, our entire way of life. Life is a series of moments, moments when we have to decide what it is we stand for, what we will fight for, where our compass of values, morality, and integrity lies. Yes, there are challenges ahead of us. But as I found with Thoroughfare, there is a power and there is strength when we come together, unified, regardless of race, religion, or political affiliation. When we realize that we are walking together daily on a common ground of history, not your history or my history, but our collective history. You see, division is truly our real enemy. If we allow them to divide us with the very rhetoric I hear being used to try and pit race against race or the east side of the county against the west side, then that division will be our downfall. I've heard supporters say of this proposal for the digital gateway through Page Land that they refer to the battlefield as a place that only glorifies the Confederacy and racism. So why should we be concerned with it? They're trying to make the history of the battlefield and its connection to Page Land less significant to strengthen their stance by using the race card. They are calling the very people who have stood and walked beside me in our fight for Thoroughfare racist because they simply support preserving Page Land, which also includes the battlefield. Many of those people who stood beside me in Thoroughfare are on this stage and are in this audience today. Regardless of race or religion, they stood with us. And because of that, we were strong and were able to withstand a lot of the attacks that we faced. But again, they are still attempting to use that race card to divide us. Knowledge, understanding, and wanting to preserve our history is not glorifying yet. That history is the foundation of who we are collectively as a community. The bodies of Union soldiers, both black and white, were also scattered among the battlefield. The blood of both stained the landscape. If I were asked to make a choice, I see more elements of racism and disregard in the current destructive acts I've experienced in Thoroughfare than that I see in the proposals for the digital gateway than I do in any feelings I have regarding the history of the battlefield. It was not the Confederacy that bulldozed my family cemetery in Thoroughfare. It was not the Confederacy that blocked our gate or our entrance to another cemetery. It was not the Confederacy that is now not allowing us to continue to bury in our active cemeteries. It is not the Confederacy that is causing my mother to lose sleep over whether or not her brother will be buried in the cemetery next to her brother. We cannot afford to allow them to use a race card to pit us against each other. I do not blame or hold anyone in this audience or this presentation responsible for something that happened over 200 years ago. I was not there. You were not there. We are responsible for what we do today. We are responsible for the actions that we do today. And I do hold the people who disintegrated my cemetery responsible. That is what I deem as an act of racism. It's not me calling anyone a racist, but it's an act of racism that is in the system that they are using. And they're trying to use that same thing to divide us now. We cannot allow that. I refuse to point my finger at anyone in order to line the pockets of someone else's financial gain. For me, this is not about race. It is about fighting to protect the history and freedoms of the dead, some of which only found their freedom through death. My ancestors, your ancestors, which are our ancestors, our collective history, their freedom to rest in peace in our hollow ground, undisturbed by data centers, widening roads, or power lines. Thank you.
That was everything. That was everything. Thank you, Tony. Right now, we do have some speakers in the audience I'd like to call up to start the opportunity for everybody to have a chance to ask questions or make comments. Kathy, if you'd like to line up first, and Jeff, and then Rob. Rob, thank you. And then it will close out with a special speaker. Cecilia?
Cecilia.
Cecilia, from this speaker. And then everybody can then come forward. So I just want to thank all the speakers, and the citizens' time will begin now.
Can you hear me? Hello? Oh, you can't tell. All right, good evening. Thank you, Elena. And thanks to all the organizers of this wonderful event. You've done a terrific job, and I think you're learning a lot. So, thank you to inform our community about the threats of massive development, our threatened landscapes, nuclear neighborhoods, quality-of-life threatened watershed, and the emerging natural sciences. The threats to our storage sites, and we are honored to be manually destoryed. And the places we call home, and our hearts to achieve while we raise our families, enjoy a wealth of retirement, or just live a good life. And I have explored the plans to build the world's largest industrial data center corridor in our community between the national park, the state forest, and our residential neighborhoods. I thought, who does that? The answer didn't make me feel any better. In fact, it was a feeling of devastation and betrayal that to the property owners along Page Land and the history of their area neighborhood and the conflict that defined our nation suddenly seemed not to matter. But the natural beauty and environmental resources of the rural crescent no longer existed or were worth protecting. And that the area that had been ruined, destroyed by their own farming and in traffic. As absurd as this sounded, they had given into the insatiable desire of the data center industry for huge swaths of land along with huge payoffs and continuing waves of Page Land from south to north, from the semelges, transforming their fear of living next to data centers into the greed that being paid millions by them. It's been an unprecedented dominant effect, and the majority of our county supervisors appear somehow to favor it. So, when what seems worthy of preserving, not just for 20 years, but for eternity, is threatened with a prospect of devastation, what do you do? Well, some of us decided we needed to do something, something big, and we knew it had to be something where the average resident could have a voice on its issue of big voice. So we took that step and formed Prince William County's first HOA and civic umbrella organization. The HOA Roundtable of Prince William County had its first meeting on February 2nd, with 12 HOAs represented, all strongly opposing the Prince William Digital Gateway. In less than 12 weeks, we've grown to 40 HOA and civic organizations representing over 68,000 households. And it has happened so fast because the threat is real and unimaginable for the vast majority of citizens in this county and in this region. No one moved here to live in the shadow of the world's largest data center industrial corridor. No one. We are growing and adding more than 3,000 households in the past week and are becoming increasingly active, communicating our position to local and federal officials. We are reaching out to people personally and making the decisions of tens of thousands of residents crystal clear. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but the challenge is resulting in HOA typically here from the shores of the Potomac to the southern boundary of Dulles Airport rising to the occasion. We invite independent homeowners not part of an HOA, our civic organization, to join our independent homeowner alliance group too, so you can have your voice heard in a gateway. But we didn't get here by the one get-along in Prince William. We were joined in this effort by true friends, supporters of our fragile environment, open spaces, patriots who are deeply committed to the preservation of our storage sites and to recognize these are the quality of life elements that make our communities wonderful places to live. And they know all too well the cost of rapid industrial development for all. And so we are honored tonight to have such a friend and supporter join us. It's now my pleasure to introduce Jeff Barnes, President of the Sully District Council of Citizens Associations, representing over 200 homeowners, community, and civic organizations. Jeff?
The Fairfax County Federation of Citizens Associations was formed, representing all homeowners' associations. Even as they were, even as they were, 80 years ago, of the nine jurisdictions or magistrate districts in Fairfax County, seven of them has district councils. Sully District is the furthest west district council in Fairfax. We board of Loudon County and Prince William, recognizing what happens across the boundaries because what happens across the boundaries affects us. You go south of 28th and Fairfax, you're Sully, you're Prince William. You go west under 50th, you're Loudon. We form a neighborhood. Two, four years ago, in 1980s, Fairfax County downzoned the Aquapond area. That was to protect the Aquapond watershed that we're talking about tonight. That downzoning did change this gross zoning of the area, but concentrated in areas that could be sued when the whole area back in the 80s was down yet sued. So settlement became a concentrated control, and the area bordering the Aquapond area was unsued and large lot developments. That had been fought over the years by developers who said, hey, my land's been down zoned, it's unfair. It was brought to the state Supreme Court, and the state Supreme Court said the county has the right and the rationale for doing this, and they kept that in court. On the other hand, developers have a long history. Residents, most of us, come and go. The Sully District Council has a land use and transportation committee that hears propositions for it. Just recently, we heard a proposition that had first been introduced in the last millennium, 1997, sorry, 1990, last year. The point that I'm making is some of our residents on our committee are new, others are old, but we remember that they had been honored for 20 years trying to get the development. Finally, they presented something we live with, and the financial offices are correct. Previous developments, they put forward, the dot com revolution hurt, the 2001 hurt, the financial crisis of the late 2009 hurt. Things have gotten better, and we've improved. The point that has to be remembered is that citizens have to be vigilant over time. Developers have the time, we may not. I am encouraged and I'm happy to hear that Prince William has developed a homeowners group. You might want to think of oriented by magistrate district and having a parry organization for the county, because you may find that the jurisdictions by magistrate have more commonality, and the county wide organization might be better for overall values. We support the rural president. We support the Aquapond downzoning that we have in Fairfax, and we support Loudon downzoning western Route 15, where that is their rural corner. Each county has its own method of keeping their development in control, but we cannot allow that to change because of a financial interest. People always have a financial interest to get the most development on their property. For more than half of my life, I have served in the agricultural and foresting district committee in Fairfax County, where developers, where homeowners who have properties that are developed in agricultural use or forestal use can keep the property at a low agricultural zoning usage, pay no taxes, as long as they keep it in that area. If they decide to pull out, they would be responsible for eight years of back taxes that they had gotten with discount. And the county has few sheds and farms still in existence today that would not have happened without this rule. There's a statewide ordinance, and I think there are statewide ordinances in Prince William, there are statewide ordinances in Fairfax, and we have all local districts as well. In your neighboring district of Loudon, somebody ran against Claude Moore. If you remember, it's Claude Moore Park. She had that property in the agricultural forestal district, and the person who ran against it said, this person got a tax exemption because they were in a tax exempt area. And the same for the current governor. He has enough property in Fairfax County that his property is in the agricultural forestal district. That's not a bad thing, despite what some people might want to say. We have to balance the good of the individual to the good of the community.
Thank you so much for coming and offering your support. Obviously, what we are facing here has not just local impacts, but regional and state impacts, and it's definitely a me, to the Pageant folks who are in the back taping us, to a we. And so I'm thrilled to introduce Rob Hartwell from the eastern end of Belmont Bay because it's really important to understand that in addition to the data center of life, the residential sprawl is also going to create another problem with the Aquapond reservoir watershed, and this idea that the board is going to protect open space, we're going to develop the rural area to save it, don't believe it. And Mr. Hartwell here has something really important to share about how you can and cannot protect open space without a conservation easement.
Okay, my pleasure. It's wonderful to be here this evening. My name is Rob Hartwell. I am the lesser well-known Hartwell member of my family. I was a Fairfax County Planning Commissioner. I was there back in the 90s as a planning commissioner, but my mother, Elizabeth Hartwell, was leaving the Hartwell list back from the 1960s, and the Mason Beck National Wildlife carries her name today. In fact, the Mason Beck National Wildlife Refuge, the Featherstone National Wildlife Refuge, which was going to be a place where the District of Columbia dumped their garbage, it was stopped at the last minute, and the Aquapond Bay National Wildlife Refuge, which borders Belmont Bay, all three of the refuges probably wouldn't be in place, but work for her, organizing citizens, doing what you're doing here, organizing Fairfax County Federation Civic Associations, and friends of Mason Beck, which was the National Wildlife Refuge area back in those days. And I followed in her footsteps to some extent. I became a commissioner on the Potomac River Commission, ICPRB. I was chairman of the Northern Ridge Regional Park Authority Foundation, and just followed in her footsteps to help preserve and protect the environment. Low and behold, I moved into Belmont Bay back in 2005 to have a view across Belmont Bay of Mason Beck, the State Park, the National Wildlife Refuge of my mother's lifetime work. And Belmont Bay is a beautiful community, a lot of kinds of homes. They did have a town center planned for Belmont Bay, and the developers haven't built a golf course first, which they promised would remain in perpetuity as open space. There was a proffer for that in the original development. So the golf course level, they didn't advertise it very well. It's interesting that when a wonderful restaurant on Aquapond Road, a five-star French restaurant, Bistro Argentage, wanted to move to Belmont Bay and asked for a 10-year lease, they were turned down because they were going to move into the clubhouse and golf course that had closed. They were turned down because the developers of Belmont Beach knew what they wanted to do. They wanted to pack in another 1,400 homes in Belmont Bay, which has one road in and out for access. The critical thing going on there, and that includes two 100-foot tall apartment buildings on the water and townhouses and houses next to George Mason University's Potomac Environmental Research Center with a 5-foot center. It's on the other side of Belmont Bay, and it really gets tricky. We have the Aquapond Bay National Wildlife Refuge there, with some water, buckwreath and trees, and two legal nests there currently. And the developers' proposal stacks and packs so much development into that plan, three-foot sidewalks instead of five-foot sidewalks, eight-foot driveways instead of 12-foot driveways. Every single aspect of their plan that was presented to the Prince William County Planning Commission Board contains dense development, and the setbacks for the National Wildlife Refuge were 20 feet, which would wipe out all the buckwreath that's there right now, existing buckwreath, to put in hundreds of townhomes and several hundreds of family homes along the river. And I was former Fairfax County Planning Commissioner, and when I read the plan, I was shocked, and I commented on it. What we did was organize the community, organize a civic association, started up an old neighborhood civic association next door. We're going to be pleased to participate in what you're doing in Prince William County. Thank you. The developers started catching heat, and they thought they had this grease with the board supervisor. And all of a sudden, what they had done previously and how they had set this up was when the developers set up Belmont Bay, they set up their own development association, and then they turned over the civic association only after 18 years to local citizens, but they kept their own other association, and they renamed it the Belmont Bay Conservation District. They showed up at the North Woodbridge Area Plan in October of 2019, changed the comprehensive plan to allow them to build along the golf course that they said was going to be in perpetuity as open space. Nobody from our civic association, from the homeowners association, was at that last meeting, and it was only the last meeting when this came up, when that lightning was slipped in. So, low and behold, a few residents caught with what was going on. I had caught with what was going on, and the homeowners association went up in arms and opposed this development. The school board opposed the development. The Autochamp Society weighed in, weighed in and opposed the development. Prince William County Conservation Alliance weighed in and opposed this test of development. And the supervisor, taking a little bit of notice, a few of them came out and visited us, Yessen Vega, Jean Lawson, Margaret Frank, of course, district. We invited Chairman Lillard out to see it. Pete Campbell has been invited to see it, and Supervisor Bodie from Aquapond. Now, I understand that some of these supervisors also campaigned on limiting growth in the rural crescent, and then changed their minds. Well, we're trying to change their minds and supporting this kind of development in Belmont Bay. What I want to tell you is that homeowner participation, resident participation is critical. The developers held off in submitting the new plan after the county staff submitted a 96-page report that was extremely critical, called them out on everything, especially on trying to double count their open space. They were trying to count the golf course that they were building on, the remainder that they wanted to have, as per the 30% open space requirement on the new development. They just can't do that. So what happened is that they knew that the homeowners association election was coming up, which we just had Wednesday, two Wednesdays ago. They ran a slate of their candidates that were actually on the board of the developers' association, and they hired a professional consultant to run a professional campaign. We had a record turnout. The citizens knew what was going on, and we exposed them. We previously, in a neighborhood of 1,190 homes, only had 300 votes. We had 900 votes. So we need to get back to the bottom. We still have a battle on our hands. They're coming back to do a recent bit of planning. Other development going on on the eastern side, and by the way, we're with you. You're not alone on this rural crescent. First thing, the Conservation Alliance did a town hall for our community, and we had over 100 people participating on the Zoom call, which is a record. We had another developer call recently. We had 170 other residents get on this call. People are paying attention. So we won some early battles. We got snaked out in October of 2019. We're on to what's going on. We're with you. We want you to be with us. We're going to help out on the new umbrella association. We'll get two major associations up. We're getting association from the eastern part of the county. We have a Redskin Stadium planned for the eastern part of the county. Where does that thing go? We don't know. We have--
Next to the metro station.
The commander's station, I'm sorry. And we have a possible point development that's being discussed where the old Colesbury Conventory, that one of our environmental state centers, Scott Searle, seems to be supporting, and Scott and I promised to talk about that. I want to find out why he's supporting that. These are waterfront developments and ecosystems that are fragile, and we have to pay very close attention to what's going on here. I want to close just by saying thank you for the time you've had here and speak, and I have a colleague that was in the bench staff for several members of Congress, and we had another Hill staffer here tonight from Montclair on the Democratic Committee. I'm the Woodbridge District Republican Chairman. The environment is not a partisan issue. What we have to preserve, we can never lose. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. The history, the graveyards of some of our slaves and some of our soldiers, we can't let them bulldoze these areas over anytime, and thank you all for being and for what you're doing. We all have to do it together.
Yes.
Fix this county, fix this development, stop the development and the rural crescent the way it's been planned, and help us out in the east as well. Thank you.
That was fabulous. Thank you, Rob, for coming out, and we absolutely will. We are one county. We will not be divided, and that's the only way any of this can be solved, is together. And our last planned speaker, Celia, if you'd like to go to the microphone.
Can anybody hear me? Can anybody hear? Hi, I'm Celia, and I'm second grade. I'm here to speak because I am concerned about the rural crescent. In this school year, I had a science lesson that taught me how roots of plants and trees prevent runoff of water. With that exception, our grass trees will be replaced with pavement, which will cause runoff and impact our drinking water and overall water supply. Plants give us oxygen and provide homes for water supply, including necessary pollinators. That is a food release and destroy these benefits. It would be better if there were parks and a meter to preserve for everyone who's money instead of that. Adults have always said kids like me to look for helpers in times of little crisis. But we are in a climate crisis, and I am still looking for the helpers.
I know, it's like I cry at commercials. That was really beautiful. And these are the lessons that we should be teaching our children. It is not about paving it over and giving a false sense of it's either we have our environment or we have good economic development. That is not accurate. So, on that note, I'd like to invite anybody else to come up if you'd like to the microphone first, my friend Rich, who gave up his seat at a previous listening session, and I thank him for his being so willing to share his spot.
Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to start with just another shout out to Frank. I had no idea about all that stuff going on in this county. If your testimony alone should be enough to make any sensible person rethink an idiotic plan that they're running. To wrap up the story, it's an anecdotal story, but it'll be very relevant to what's going on. It was a CEO who was very used to having a very smart CEO on the internal side, and the guy quit, and he put a search on, he got the top three out of this. The first two, he said, I only have one question, and you answer it correctly, you get the job. Okay, I'm ready. How much is one in one? And now the guy is thinking, what the hell? And now the guy is thinking, what the heck? He's trying to trick me? But he said he couldn't come up with anything better, so he says, two. No, you're not getting the job. Next. Next guy comes in, same question, same answer. You're not getting the job. Third guy comes in. And he says, how much is one in one? This guy really pauses and thinks for a minute and he says, I'll tell you what, Hannah. You tell me what you want it to be and I'll make it that way. Now, irrelevant to that story, is there's so much unknown, the rural crescent, about these construction costs. You know, they keep publishing, in my opinion, misleading information because they don't have all the facts. Not until all critical data is in, can you even begin to theoretically project cost. And even then, if you've never heard a scope creep on a project, this one is going to be the most magnificent change in numbers we've ever seen. They just don't know. So, based on this promising pace to the eastern districts, because I think they're being fooled up there. That the needed repairs to their schools and new schools is going to come very close because of the building on this. By the time they get done, there'll be so many environmental delays. If they do it, that money will get there years after they can get it from the early zoot area that would give the eastern district immediate relief or very predictable release in terms of how long. Okay. And that's of course, the existing area is ready to go. Okay. Okay, by the way, if you remember nothing else in this presentation, remember the CFO story when they tell you what the cost is. Okay, if both sites will offer similar revenue and they're picking the one that is number one, full of uncertainty and filled with controversy and knows nothing else for sure, but destroy the rural crescent. When there's three approved land that has already been approved and offers those accelerated tax relief to the eastern district. It begs the question, who is the real beneficiary of this illogical decision? Dominion Power, who conveniently has underutilized power lines running up Payson Land. Are they a possible candidate? Has modest from Dominion Power been reporting our board? The landowners on Payson Land, who represent the small percentage of our residents, they will certainly benefit from this. They have implied that their reasoning is they can't sell their farms and are stuck. But if they are, then they need help. So, why hasn't this board looked at more modest changes to the rural crescent that would preserve the integrity of the crescent and not, you know, cause all this crazy controversy and give that now? Is there a public record of these meetings that they've had with the board? Where they supposedly have pleaded for help? And why hasn't the county, the bigger question, done anything other than waiting for this imploded revenue that they think they're going to get? If it's real, then the board shouldn't have taken action. And they're telling, if they did some modest changes that we could all live with, maybe these farmers could, you know, sell their land and move on. They don't need to be millionaires. They could probably live quite well if they sold their land to a more modestly thought out development. If it's not real, as someone whispered in their ear, lots of potential possibilities here. Based on the previous analogy, why hasn't any government agency at any level, county, state, or federal, not come forward to start an investigation into this crazy plan? That they're out there making. You know, a federal judge could put out an immediate say order on any urban development. And I'm hoping some government agency wakes up to this crazy controversy of rural development. I want to end this with two things. There are some major changes coming in data centers, okay? Granted, crazy technology is on the horizon. We announced this year that could obviate the building of data centers. I don't have a lot of information, but if you want to Google Viking Enterprises, you might find some very interesting information with this new technology. Finally, I'd like to end with lyrics from the song "Big Yellow Taxi" by Joni Mitchell. Sing it. And it goes, "They paved paradise and put up a park lot." Thank you.
That was well worth waiting for. Thank you. I also want to acknowledge Supervisor Lawson in the back. And also, there are people that are here. And anybody else who'd like to come to the mic and have something that they'd like to share?
What question?
Yes, sir?
I would like to share something.
Can you come down to the mic so we can hear you? Anybody that wants to speak on the mic, just come on down. You can line up if you want.
I will keep it short, like me. Thank you, everyone. Great stories from up on the space today. One thing that has to be covered that I think is important for all of us, we talked about water, we talked about the air, we talked about traffic, we talked about highways. We haven't talked about the effects and I like the fact that it's radiation. It's very important. On December 28th, 2012, I was murdered by my own party act of infanticity. When they brought me back, I became a libelary citizen. Being in this room tonight is very difficult. Although my implant is shielded, the catheters, the tips, bar tips, are as smooth as they grow in my heart. I'm not, 100% facing a retribution. It's the only way that I can stay alive. I moved to Long Bay so that I could have a little bit of land, a little bit of separation from the electromagnetic radiation that we're swimming in every day, this toxic soup that seeps. I feel I'm the canary in the dark. It's affecting everyone, whether you feel it or not. It's down to a so little level. The power lines are really full of it up. Now, we're going to add data centers and connecting the power lines. The electromagnetic currents and vibrations that are going to fill our atmosphere environment is going to take a toll on all of us. The electrification of America, from the start, is side by side with the level of all man-made diseases, including cancer. So, the more we see of electromagnetic radiation, the more of a toll it's going to take on our health. I just wanted to put that bug in your ear, do a little bit of research on your own because just because you can't see it doesn't mean it isn't bad for you. So, thank you for coming out and talking.
Lieutenant Merrick, of Mayor Chuck Gainesville. I've been involved in this effort for about the last five months. I have a sensitive analysis on the tax revenue information. Basically, it started me with when they came out and they tried to sell us the whole idea on $700 million a year at a complete build out. I knew that was totally wrong because they made that a loud amount. Unfortunately, Prince William County has a 64% tax break for data centers. That's why there's a $300 million difference between what Loudon County would be receiving compared to what Prince William County would be receiving on data centers. They charge $4.20 and Prince William County's previous rate was like 115 and now we're up to 165. But we're still about less than half. So, they went from 64% tax rate to 60%. So, they need a lot more tax revenue because they simply raised the rate. And if they can't raise the rate because they have to compete with, you know, with other counties. But if we are so attracted to data centers, I'm sure they would still be able to want to come here even at $3. Which would be another $179 million that they'll have to buy out and another 2.2 billion. This thing is only being driven by the $1 to $2 billion windfall for the people on Pageland. They have to sell it on, we're going to get so much more revenue from schools, so much revenue from the counties. If you're ready to have, if you're ready to play by the rules where that hasn't been getting built, we're going to have that revenue anyway. And they really take a careful look at this before they decide to destroy us. They just win area, excuse me, two times national airport, over 2,000 acres. And once you make this decision, just like on Gejo crossing, they cleared 95% of that to build, which mostly up, you know, 50% of the ones that's being built. There only been one building at a time though. So, it's going to take a long time for the city to actually get the revenue. So, we really need your help. We have an organization, Gejo Citizens, a smart group. We were going to try and get legal counsel to try to go forward with this, to make sure the county follows all the rules. And that's what we have to do. So, thank you very much for your wonderful time.
Hi, my name is Jenny Becker and I'm in Burnsville district. I spoke many times at the board meetings. So, I always say it's Burnsville district because we have to do that speaking board meetings. I think I'm trained now. And I have spoken so many things, so I want to thank everyone who are speaking already and a lot of it will be repeated. But I think I would say that I moved to Northville to be in the rural area, to move to where I feel at home. My husband and I come from the very rural part of Pennsylvania. We live in Manassas. I got it real quick. You put your girl in the city, but she ain't liking it. And Manassas, the city, you come from where I'm from. So, Northville's like home. I teach in the school and I like having a doctor, but his son goes to the school that I teach at. My daughter, his kid went to that school. It's a small town deal. What they want in Northville is you're to ruin it. And it makes me sad. And it makes me want to cry because they're going to put me in a position where I have to sell my house if I go because I will not live in Bristow. If I want to live in Bristow, you know, if anyone else was there, I would move there. That's not what I would. We have the right to choose where we want to live. They have to listen to us. We pay for that. They need to remember that. They have to think before.
If there's nobody on the other side, I'll take my turn here. My name's Karen Sheen. I'm in Gainesville district. I'm the director with Elena for the Coalition to Protect Prince William County. And I'm one of the organizers of this town hall. As I worked to pull together everything for this event, I thought a lot about what is being put at risk in our lives. If this board of supervisors has their way, the organization of every sector of Prince William County will impact many things for every resident. There is more to consider than just the promises being made. The financial costs, the loss of green space, the threats to parks, the permanent changes to our grandchildren's futures, the threats to our water and to our quality of life. But I'm going to focus on one aspect that hasn't been talked about much, noise. I have worked in and around data centers for much of my career. As program manager at Time Warner Cable, I was even responsible for the decommissioning of their data center here in Northern Virginia to a new massive facility in Colorado. I am very familiar with the power, water, cooling, and other demands of data centers. The landowners and developers stand in front of our supervisors and the residents of the county make many promises and claim with all their passion that data centers won't be noisy. Just a moment, I have something to share.
This is the noise from the servers, fans, and cooling units in a data center. This noise is silent and cannot be totally contained within the building.
That's an actual data center.
This is the ever-present crackling and hum from transmission lines and substations required to power data centers.
That's outside, under a power line.
This is the noise from the outside diesel generators that are kicked on at least once a month at a data center to make sure they are all working.
That's the outside noise of the diesel generators.
But data centers will not be the only contributor to noise in all of the proposals before us. The urbanization plans for Prince William also include multiple road widening. The Biden Parkway, which they tried to say is not the books, but the roads are just going to be widened and just fault something else. Widening the Hecop Boulevard to four lanes all the way to Antioch Road. Widening 234 Sudley Road to four lanes from Page 1 to Route 15. Widening Route 15 to four lanes from Sudley to the Leving County Line, widening Purcell Road, widening Verhill Road, widening Dunkers Road and north. Increased traffic on all these roads will generate noise, lots of noise. Audio was distributed in 2014 by the Pageland landowners who fought the Biden Parkway resolution there eight years ago.
This is why we have to fight against these proposals. Our quality of life will just be gone.
Two quick stories. First of all, don't forget we can have an attack with the Loudon County line for the chaffed nation. They stood strong against the craziness of what politicians were doing and they shocked everybody. But I have a customer that lives on Pageland and he told me how heartbroken he was that he was forced to sell his land. He's got family members in Gainesville and Bristow. He built his retirement home there. He was offered $750,000. I said, well, that's a lot of money. He said, it's really not. There's no sale. We're going to have to move. They're giving all these people all this money. We're not going to fight. all this money. We're not going to find another place in the area, but we didn't want to. But I was told that if I don't sell now, they're going to landlocked me and I have no choice. And he was forced into making the decision. The other thing that I have been having conversations with my upcoming supervisor, someone that I work very closely with, I've had a lot of great relations with. He's been an advocate for defending the rural crescent. He ran on the rural crescent. In fact, he ran on defending Pageant. And I wrote him last week, three weeks ago, and I said, we have no representation anymore. Without our nod, you sold out of us. You left us without anybody to vote for. My wife is very active in defending the asphalt plan from going up. Where it was a 5-3 vote. We brought in the corners. She brought in a number of it. Everybody watched. We had one Democrat change. We went to a 4-4 vote and it stopped it. And I wrote Pete Campbell and I said, we don't want to grab that option because you took the money before you gave us a chance to even fight. My question is, why has he not resigned?
Yes.
And if he won't resign, we need to recall.
Yes.
Do you mind if I?
I just, I just, um, before we start to close up, because I think we're getting to that time, I wanted to have everybody, um, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that before any more people leave, I want to recognize everybody who delivered a flyer or who volunteered. Can you all please stand up? Everybody please stand up who helped to make this event happen. Thank you. That community is bringing happens. And to Karen Chan, I actually have something for everybody on the stage. I have a rose and I have a bottle of wine. I have flowers for Karen because she works so hard to make this happen. And I wanted to just say thank you. So before I just, thank you, everyone. You must participate. It is not enough to depend on other people. And if you want to protect your quality of life, you're going to have to speak up. There is no knight in shining armor. And as the gentleman said, we don't have representation. It is up to us. And you see, we have countywide support and we have support from outside the region. And everybody has to decide that this is worth their time to protect.
Before you go, um, I get, I get a little bit of my own thoughts. You know, I'm, I'm in the weeds and I know more than I should. And I take it for granted that everybody's aware of a lot of things. And I, it elicited a lot of the comments tonight. I don't think a lot of people really understand just how bad we have it here in this county in many respects. Um, somebody just mentioned the county following the rules. Let me tell you something. This county doesn't follow the rules in anything when it comes to the residents. They don't follow the rules in FOIA. You want to get something out of them, you've got to follow, you've got to follow them. I've written in Davis, forced them to do it. You've got a school, you've got a school on FOIA to get them to provide the documentation in many cases. It involves going straight up against the county attorney's office. They don't follow, the planning office doesn't follow the rules with regard to statute. We've got a lot of small area, of small comprehensive plans involved in the overall comp plan that you're going to see revealed in a couple of weeks. The planning office has created out of whole courts, a brand-new category, land use application. The land use are comp plan, land use.
Land request.
Land request. There's no statutory authority for that. We're doing it in this state. The only way you get to change your land use in this county is by following rezoning and following the comp plan amendment and rezoning when that comp plan amendment is required with that rezoning. This county is out of control. It's the leadership of this county, both at the elected level and the executive level. In no other county that I've worked in, have I ever seen anything as bad as this. Now, I work with a lot of land use attorneys. I work with a lot of jurisdictional attorneys. The one thing that they all have in common is their reference to Prince William County. When you ask them about Prince William County and land use, universally their response is Prince William County is the wild, wild west. Proffers. Somebody brought it up earlier. They're going to proffer this. They're going to proffer that. You want to know how meaningless proffers are in this county? Let me tell you how meaningless proffers are in this county. Last summer, the Hunter property rezoned, did a government amendment and rezoning for a data center outside the Everglades, the Conley Hall. One of the issues was the height from the, height of the data center. It backs out to two residential neighborhoods. Ashley, Ashley Ridge being one of them. This year, not, not more than six months after that was approved by the county board, the developer for that application has filed a proffer amendment. But it's a small administrative proffer amendment. One that the planning commission will never see, one that the board will never hear, and one that will never have a public hearing for you to speak at, or more appropriately, for those who live in the surrounding neighborhoods to speak at. The proffer amendment to increase the height. So all that proffer negotiation that the residents did, all the input that they did to get it limited to a certain height, out the window because it's going to be administratively approved by a staffer in the planning office. The same thing is happening at Yewsbury War, raising it up to 85 feet. I could go on. There's a brand new, there's a waiver of a proffer just filed for one of the data centers that isn't even built at the intersection of Conley and 55 so that they can build in the easement, which is something we don't allow. And last but not least, developer assertions. Call me cynical, and call me a lot of things. But developers, the people that they bring to these hearings and purport to give the both the planning commission and the board of supervisors facts are nothing more than paid hacks who are delivering a crafted message regardless of whether it's true or not. Elena and I spent years, years fighting the convention. As a result of that fight, we've actually established a bit of a relationship with their executive staff in Richmond. It's to the point that we can call them up and they will sit down and they will bring their lead load engineers to talk to us, frankly, talk to us, explain to us things like load, transmission, availability of power on certain power lines. We had a meeting just like that a couple of months ago prior to, just prior to a planning commission hearing on a, on a data center application that was being heard that night. I invited one of the planning commissioners to be in on this Zoom call. This was a VP from Dominion Power and their chief load engineer at Richmond. We discussed the impact of this particular data center and the requirements for power. And Dominion Power was very, very forthright in that phone, in that Zoom call. What they intend to do will create the need for another power line. We went to the, we went to the hearing that night. We spoke to that. The planning commissioner that was on the Zoom call confirmed it. And the engineer for the data center that was doing the application essentially told the planning commission that we were full of shit and didn't know what we were talking about and that we were not to be credit, we were not to be given any credit because we didn't have the engineering degrees behind our name that he did. And because he had those credentials, he was right and we were wrong. And Dominion didn't know what they were talking about. And you wanted to know the planning commissioners? Majority of the planning commissioners heated. They heated that guy. They didn't heat the people that fought Dominion for four and a half years. They didn't heat the words of the load engineer from Dominion, who's got no skin in the game and who actually should probably underplay it, but didn't because the guy's a straight shooter. But that's what you're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Please get engaged. It is worth fighting, not just for your present, but it's worth fighting for the future and for protecting the past. Thank you, everyone, and have a lovely evening.
Clean drinking water from the Akoquan Reservoir, historical preservation, welcoming national parks, and a good quality of life means local government must support sustainable land use policy. Prince William County is at a crossroads. With growing opposition in the community countywide as well as regionally, we stand united as an obstacle to greed and developer handouts that will result in the loss of our best smart growth land use, the Rural Crescent. As recently as 2016, the Page Land Lane residents advocated to protect the beauty and history of Page Land Lane from becoming a victim to expensive sprawl development. This is a six-year-old quote from an article in Bacon's Rebellion as the fight began to stop the Bi-County Parkway. Quote, "The three Amigas live on Page Land Lane because they like living in the country. While development pressure from Washington has penetrated even deeper into the Virginia countryside to the north and south, building has been limited in an area of northwestern Prince William known as the Rural Crescent. The wooded hills around the Manassas battlefield are dappled now with the yellows and umbers of autumn. The fenced-in fields beside Snyder's house are dotted with horses and geese." Her farm, where her family has lived for six generations, was the scene of military maneuvers in the Second Battle of Manassas, and Snyder has hosted Civil War reenactments there. Conservation is in her blood. Indeed, the Snyder name is synonymous locally with historical preservation." End quote. Fast forward to today, and the draw of big money per acre that data centers are willing to pay has those same landowners folding up their preservation tent in exchange for the promise of $1 million an acre, asking the rest of us to ignore the robust data center opportunity zone in already zoned industrial areas of the county. Proposals being put forward have industrial and data center proliferation consuming thousands of acres and spreading across the county. The mobility plans and the comprehensive plan update are taking us in the wrong direction. Instead of driving less, these plans make us more car-dependent. From an April 25, 2022 article in Greater Washington, the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, NVTA, will make multi-billion dollar decisions this year on the region's transportation future. Analysis from the Coalition for Smarter Growth, CSG, finds that the agency's massive highway expansion plans would fuel increased levels of driving on top of the additional trips anticipated from population growth. Instead of helping Northern Virginians drive less, the proposed 1,200 miles of new pavement would make the region more car-dependent. Vehicle miles traveled, VMT, would increase up to 42% on Loudoun's highway network, significantly more than the county's rate of population growth, and up to 60% on Prince William's non-interstate highways, almost three times the rate of its population growth. What does this really mean to everyday citizens? We pay for unnecessary road infrastructure and its maintenance to line the pockets of landowners and developers. This county is proposing stupid growth, not smart growth, by proposing data center proliferation and high-density residential sprawl in rural areas with no infrastructure. This board is incentivizing more cars and noisy truck traffic on roads. Instead of sticking to the data center opportunity zone, the Board of Supervisors has replanned for data centers, rather than good mixed-use land use opportunities for affordable housing with walkable communities, signaling that they are willing to trade data center blight for our natural and cultural resources that sustain your quality of life. Has anyone noticed the multimillion-dollar Interstate 66 project? How is Metro coming to Gainesville along there? Via a tunnel? With a price tag of billions? The future map is more than simply unrealistic. It is selling misinformation and attempting to use that to support out-of-control residential sprawl throughout the county, but especially in the Rural Crescent, where two-lane roads are the transportation network. Don't be fooled by their ethereal namesake. Villages and hamlets are simply another name for mixed-use development, housing and commercial slapped together, that will incentivize sprawl growth and require costly citizen tax dollars to build and maintain infrastructure like roads, schools, and fire and rescue. The village of Noxville doesn't need, nor will it benefit, from development sprawl, redirecting it away from the village that it already is. The Woolsey Hamlet would bring dense development along the journey through hallowed ground byway, not protecting the history, but rather eliminating it and paving it over. The Cat Harpen Hamlet is planned next to the Digital Gateway Data Center alley on Page Land Lane. People are literally scrambling to sell out to avoid the visual and auditory impacts of data center blight in rural areas. Greenwich Hamlet is located in a historical overlay. Once again, the premise that you pave over your natural and cultural resources belies common sense. In a time when we can ill afford to lose the remaining working, family-run farms in Prince William County, the Haymarket Activity Center would destroy a 90-year-old, multi-generational working farm. If this county means what it says in the sustainability goal from the comp plan update, quote, "The objectives outlined in this focus area are aimed at establishing Prince William County as a leader in sustainability through expansion of agriculture and agritourism, land conservation and preservation, promotion of clean and renewable energy consumption, increased focus on recycling and reuse of materials, and finally, preservation of the county's rich and diverse cultural history." End quote. This proposal is in complete opposition to that goal and plan. If one looks at the names of the developers benefiting from these land use proposals to develop high-density housing under the scheme of land preservation, you'll find the usual who's who list of suspects. The reality is that unless the promise of open space preservation includes a credible third-party land trust, just like the current threats to other saved green areas in the county that are now fighting high-density housing encroachment, there is no real land preservation. It's just more high-density housing sprawl under a fancy new name. Sustainability is not only the antidote to mitigating the impacts of climate change, but also the antidote to the division people are feeling in our communities. We are one, Prince William. If we destroy our natural and cultural assets, everyone suffers. If we protect them, everyone benefits. The Rural Crescent was adopted 22 years ago as our best smart growth land use tool, when we had little idea what challenges we would be facing today. Now is the time to reinforce that forward-thinking plan, not to urbanize and pave everything over. Once it's gone, it's gone forever.